We'll call the January 12th Danby Select Board Meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Would you please rise and join me in a moment of silence for our late Justice of the Peace and Auditor Meyer and T. Green, and then we'll say the Pledge to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Beth, would you please read the procedure for remote access attendance?
Remote access to select board meetings while not required by law is offered in order to encourage access and participation for as many of our town's citizens as possible. It is understood that a select board meeting is a meeting open to the public, but not a public meeting per se. Business is conducted and votes are cast by board members. Therefore, public attendees in person or remote who wish to comment on an agenda action item when it is addressed in the course of the meeting should indicate such intention during the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for remote attendee participation are: Remote attendees will be muted by online host upon joining the meeting, remaining so unless recognized to speak. Intention or desire to speak in order to comment or ask questions will be indicated by use of the hand raising function of the remote platform. People will be recognized in the order in which the hand raising function is activated. Online host will alert the chair to the presence of remote questions or comments. Remote participants, when recognized, will unmute their device and identify themselves with clearly spoken first and last name. Comment or question will be limited to two to three minutes, after which participant will be muted. General ground rules concerning decorum remains the same as that which is expected of citizens, guests, and board members attending in person, namely, the speaker will not be interrupted and will not interrupt other speakers. The speaker will treat the proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue and not personalities. And the procedures for use of the online platform and the above standards will be reviewed at the beginning of each meeting, which we've just done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have people participating with us?
Yes, we do. We have Annette Smith, Chris Hardaway, and Teri Parker, Gary Durr, Lauren Dever, and a phone number, and I'll ask that person who they are. Sometimes if they're on a phone, they can't see these messages, so.
And for the people who are using the remote access in our live audience, we have Mr. and Mrs. Porter. Okay, on the agenda, as you see, I've written in a couple things. Under the motion to approve mailing ballots, we need another motion to set the date and time for a special meeting, to sign the warning, adopt the proposed budget, and appoint an auditor. Then down under the Treasurer's Report, we're going to need a short executive session, and this will be your last chance for input on the final draft of the budget. And last item under the Road Commissioner's Report would be a motion to approve a fleet permit for Newport Sand and Gravel. Do I hear a motion? Is there any other additions? If not, do I hear a motion to set the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Do we have public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay, I have received a letter from an individual that could not be here this evening. That is Nancy Lee Kennedy, who has written that she spoke with Pastor Woodburn of the Danby Congregational Church about hosting a music series once a month in the Danby Meeting House space. Pastor Woodburn graciously offered the meeting house for these events. They will be nonreligious events, one Saturday per month in June, July, August, and September of 2023, from 5:30 PM till 9:00 PM, featuring local Vermont musicians. She is asking the town to help sponsor these events with an $800 donation to offset musician costs. I think that the live music and local music series will be an asset to our community. Thank you, Nancy Lee Kennedy.
Now, what was the, when were they going to do?
It would be one a month in June, July, August, and September.
So four, four different months.
Four different ones on a Saturday evening from 5:30 till 9:00 PM. Does anybody care to make a motion relative to that? Yes.
Is that $800 per month?
No. Yeah.
So that would be in next year's?
No, that would be now, because the thinking is, if it works, then next year she would ask to be put on the ballot for appropriation. But the way the appropriations go now, the money comes in later, like those appropriation checks are usually issued in December. So she's asking the town to sponsor this for this, to help sponsor it for this year.
And it's a free event for townspeople?
Yep.
Did she say what the actual cost of it would be?
She did not. Some of the musicians will donate their time, some will not, but this would include paying musicians and some advertising.
Will Selfman Street be blocked off for traffic or, you know what I'm saying?
That was the issue in the past, that streets were being blocked, and it was outside, so it's, some people didn't care for the music, listening to it, and this would also, if there was a weather event, it would be indoors.
So I guess my question that I didn't quite understand is, she wants the money now? Or in, because it can be on, what I'm saying is, is July, August, and September is basically our next fiscal year, which there's no reason it can't be on our budget for, or even in the appropriation thing, right?
Well, June, but, you know, she needs to get some advertising going, so part of it would be in this year's, part of it would be in next year's.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how we would put it in there. So you're, you're saying that we would pay it all in June, so in, in this fiscal year?
Yeah, or maybe May, because I think the first one was like June 17th or something. So, you know, she'd need some money to put an ad in the News Guide, I guess. Maybe have a sign made.
So it is a free event for the town?
Yep.
I'll make the motion that we sponsor or give $800 to the, what do we call it now?
The Meeting House Musical Series. And the church did it with the stipulation that it's like family kinds of music, it's not AC/DC or something.
I guess my only question on that is, we're sure they're going to happen if we put the money in. That would be my only concern.
Well, the motion could be warranted, that if she can't, contingent on booking the She told me that she has two people lined up already. I think she's a little hesitant to contact people, you know, until she knows that she's got some money to pay them with.
What if you did the, did it in four blocks, especially give her $200 and see what happens with the first one?
Well, and part of the money, as I said, is for advertising, so.
And it's times that, you know, times like, well, what if it doesn't happen?
Sure. Well, and the other, the other thing that we could actually do then is, there's no reason we can't add it to our, the other 600 to the, to the, yeah. I mean, that would be a lot easier to do. Is that anything that we have to do on this, this meeting, or?
Well, she wants to know if she should move forward on this. I mean, you can't call up a band a month before an event and expect them to have time on their hands.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'll leave my motion out there and just say that I'd rather do it in the $200 increments.
So the motion would be for $200, should we say, 60 days before the event?
Yeah, I mean, the first 200, as long as she's still committed to it, and then we can put the other 600 into the.
Recording in progress. Sorry, this disconnected and reconnected, so I got to wait.
So is there a second to the?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Clerk, would you poll the board? Yep.
Powers?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
Okay, any other public comment?
Not from here, but I have a public comment, and that is just, I think it's fabulous to support something like this going on in the town, right in the center of our village. In the future, I hope we can come up with more money for it, because to have musicians come and do something for 200 bucks is really undervaluing what live music is. So I'm just going to put in that, that promo and that pitch for later date that we up the ante, but I think it'll be great to see how it goes and get it off the ground.
Thank you. Okay, motion to adopt the minutes of the Select Board Meeting of December 8th, 2022.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Any corrections, deletions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the minutes of the Select Board Meeting of December 8th, please say aye.
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 Okay, a motion to adopt the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. So the hazard mitigation plan that everybody put a lot of effort into over the last year and a half or two years was accepted by the state. They had a couple little items that they wanted tweaked, and Stephanie Bork did that, and it's now time for us to adopt it.
I'll make the motion, we adopt the hazard mitigation plan.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. A motion to authorize the Planning Commission to submit a renewal application for the Village Center application. For anyone who doesn't know, we have a Village Center designation that happened, when did that happen, 15 or 16, Dreya?
17 years, so it'd be 15.
So that's up for renewal now, and that allows people that own structures or businesses within the designated area to apply for grant money.
And you're familiar with the boundaries. Can you let everybody?
Dreya, I think right beside you on the shelf there, in that pile of papers on the top, is one of the maps. So it basically goes from Courier Memorial School down to the Silas Griffiths property and up the hill to here. And the criteria that is laid down by the state is that you have things that comprise a village. You have a school, you have a town office, you have businesses, you have a church. That's what they look like.
Steven Theater.
I'll make the motion. The Planning Board basically just has to write a letter and ask for a renewal application, and they'll say in their letter some of the things that happened, and now that the town owns the Veterans Monument, that adds to it.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Motion to approve mailing ballots for Town Meeting 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Motion to set a date and time for a special meeting to sign the warning, adopt the proposed budget, and appoint an auditor. This would be to fill the vacancy created by the passing of Mike Green, and those notices have been posted. Anyone interested would need to submit a letter of interest by the 20th of January. So this, I am envisioning, is one of those five to 10-minute meetings, and it could be at like noon time, like we've had some of these meetings in the past, or it could be in the evening, whatever you prefer. And it would need to be like either Friday, February 20th, or Monday, the 23rd, or Tuesday, the 24th.
Now, why are we doing a special meeting for the proposed budget?
Because it has to be advertised as a meeting to do that, and if there is any other corrections to the budget, which we'll be making under the Treasurer's Report tonight, that would give Jennifer the time to plug in those numbers.
I'm going to, you're, you're, January 20th, not February 20th.
Right, January 20th.
You said February.
I did?
Yeah.
Oh, my God. Sorry about that.
Oh, it's January.
January, I apologize.
I'm going to the 20th.
You know what? I was looking, I, I wrote F for Friday.
You want to do Friday, the 20th at noon?
Good idea.
Yep. Okay, it's a date. Friday, January 20th at 12:00 PM here in this room.
And when are all the people who were looking for the position of auditor got to have their request, their?
That day.
That day. By noon?
Wow, we're going to have to put that on there, I guess.
Because that's my only concern. I don't want to appoint somebody and have somebody show up at 3:00 and us say, oh, I guess we should have been clear.
Right.
So have we warned the?
Not yet, because we need to.
But I'm saying, have you posted?
The vacancy?
Yes.
Yes, and that had to be done within 10 days of the vacancy occurring.
So how do you propose to let people know that it's got to?
Just change it.
Okay.
Okay, so all those in favor of a special meeting at noon time on Friday, January 20th, please say aye.
Aye.
Who's going to do that motion?
Did we get a second?
Thought Mike did.
That's what I thought.
Oh, that's fine. I just didn't type fast enough.
It's been too long for us to remember.
After we got the month straightened out. Okay, next on our agenda is a motion to set the rate of pay for ballot clerks at $15 an hour.
And what were we paying?
14, and that's been for many, many, many years.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
There's a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Okay, next is a motion to approve and sign the AOT Mileage Certificate that changed slightly by .20 miles with the reclassification of shortcut road to a trail. So other than that, everything has stayed the same. We just need to.
I'll make the motion.
Formulize.
Second it.
Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried unanimously. I'll pass this around to be signed. Okay, I need a motion to go into executive session for personnel matter.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. We will enter executive session. Is that clock correct? Is it 7:25?
Yeah, 7:26.
7:26.
7:26, okay. Jennifer, would you please join us? What time is it? Okay, we are back in our meeting at 7:56, and I will entertain a motion to rescind the motion to pay ballot clerks $15 an hour.
I'll make it.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to rescind, please say aye.
Aye.
And I will entertain a motion to set the rate of pay for ballot clerks, beginning with Town Meeting 2023, at $16 an hour.
I'll make the motion.
Can I add to your motion that, so we just clarified, that all ballot clerks?
Yes, you can add to that. All ballot clerks.
And I'll second it if he added it.
Okay, so the motion is to pay all ballot clerks, beginning with Town Meeting 2023, $16 per hour. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Okay, so now we have some time to put final ayes on the proposed budget. Are there any questions or suggestions on the proposed budget for Jennifer?
So our proposed budget right now is a total of, oh, $50,000 up, I was thinking, wasn't it? Yeah, just about exactly $50,000, is that?
Remind.
And it was mostly, there was a huge, was it insurance was one of our largest increases?
Yes. Right now, we have, the 2023 budget is $65,000, and we increased it to $100,000.
And then we had added to our capital equipment fund so that we could start meeting what the cost of equipment is rising to be, so we're more prepared.
We did.
And I think those were our biggest things, other than a few odds and ends. We gave the clerk a 5% raise, and that was roughly it. Unless anybody else knows of anything else in there of any pertinence.
And fuel went up $10,000.
And our fuel, which were all uncontrolled costs, basically, fuel and insurance.
Exactly.
And hopefully the town grew by $50,000, which I think it should have easily done, so.
Okay, so then those will be the figures that we'll use to plug into the warning that will be signed at that meeting on January 20th. Okay, then we move on to the Road Commissioner's Report. Update on current projects.
Well, our, our current project at the moment is, is still, it seems like it has been going on a while, but it's looking really good for any of you who have made it over Parishill. It's, I, I, I know it sounds like a broken record, but I think we were way behind on our brush cutting, and we're starting to get our roads so that we can actually mow them with our new mower next year. We did a little ditching. What else we do, Steve?
We plowed a little snow.
Plowed, plowed a little snow, salted a lot of ice, or sanded a lot of ice for a few days, and that was it. And that's the biggest problem right now, is finding the days that you can actually commit to setting up and cutting brush when there's a pending storm out there. You hate to get all the way up to Parishill and find out that it's time to turn around, just to come back.
Broke a plow truck instead of chipper.
Yeah, but yeah, that's, that's, I mean, we've got a lot of ditch projects scoped out coming up just as soon as we can. I think a lot of people we've talked with already, and our, our goal is to hopefully get another month or two of, of some decent brush cutting done, so to start the spring And our, our goal is to hopefully get another month or two of, of some decent brush cutting done so to start the spring where we can go right onto our roads.
And I had a question put to me about why brushes aren't cut to ground level. And the answer to that was that they go back and use.
Basically, what's happening is we are, while we have the work zone set up, we're cutting our stumps a little higher. We have new chains on our saws and it avoids us from having sharpen so much so that we can get more work done while the work zone is set up. And then we can come back later without actually closing a lane down and cut the short stumps and have it looking better and keep it so that we can mow it. There's a couple stumps that we left that are probably four foot high that we're using as markers on the roadside so we have a, a focal point so that we know when we're coming down in a bad storm where the edge of the road is. And the crew kind of feels that that's more aesthetically pleasing than metal posts and delineators that are just going to reflect at you. And that's the best reason I've got.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, as somebody that's plowed, I understand having visual markers.
Well, we all hate those delineator posts, reflect them back at you.
Okay, anything else or can we move on to the motion? Well, I'll entertain a motion to award a contract to install a generator for the town office and garage complex. Steve?
Uh, before I make a motion, did any of you guys want to look at that? There's four different.
Yep, I'll pass them over as I. I'm missing something here. Did I give you all the quotes?
No, there's two on that one you've got, Tom. They're back further. They're like maybe halfway through that packet.
Where'd you put them, Steve?
I didn't put them there.
I'll find them. I'll just read everything before I get to. Here we go. So talking with everybody, who did you, did, I mean, which one did you like for units and?
Uh, the two units I preferred were the ones, there's a, the one you're looking at, I believe, is the Kohler. And it's the exact same one that Tyler Electric quoted.
And it was the cheapest, too.
Where's Brookfield Service out of that? Brookfield or Mount?
Northfield.
Okay, up there.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, so I didn't see Brad's.
12:05, 12:48. I've got the same unit from Brad that he quoted.
Yeah.
Let's specify Tyler.
I'm Brad Tyler. I mean, Dylan, I've done to it in seven years for a battery and it changed you up.
And now I guess my, so Tyler Electric is in Dorset and those guys are?
Northfield, two hours away.
Right.
And we have a very good experience record with Tyler, who did all the work in this building.
Tyler's price is about, I think it's a little less than $700, more expensive, but I feel it's worth spending the money to keep it local.
That. And Brad will take care of it if there's a problem.
Right.
I make the motion that we award the contract to Tyler Electric.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I will sign the contract.
And the only other thing that I'm going to put in the universe right now on the generator is we will have to contact somebody to get the propane brought in and hooked up.
Who's Brad usually use?
He can't leave it up to the customer, because a lot of your customers already have a propane supplier.
Well, we already, Marcel does propane and the fuel, so we have an account there.
He's probably give you as good a rate as anybody right now.
Yeah, I mean, we could make a couple calls. I think that would probably be our smartest thing, is at least call a couple, three of them to find out. Because on a generator, the usage is going to be.
It's sporadic.
Yeah, and we're going to want a minimum of a 250 gallon.
250 or a five, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to want a 250 or a five. So some of these companies are going to be looking at if they want to put that there. So we probably should
You know, I know.
Make some calls and.
Door's been pretty aggressive in some of their pricing.
Well, some of these companies have thousands of tanks kicking around, so it's not a big deal for them to.
Yeah, I think my father's a little flame. He doesn't use that much propane a year, but they gave him a hell of a deal.
I think probably the way we should leave it is you should call at least three of them and find out what they want and tell them what the usage is for. Like Mike said, we want a minimum of a 250, not a 500. I think 250 might give us a little more flexibility on location.
Yes, I mean, like my father, I think they put in three of them, 125s.
What's your thoughts, Kenny? You got something brewing over there?
Well, I just basically switched to Door. Um, they went to, I went from a 250 to a 500 tank. And with the, with the larger volume tank, the really doesn't make sense, but the pressures in the, the propane makes it last longer for some reason. I don't know why. It doesn't make sense.
Well, I guess you only get like 70% of the actual use out of a tank.
Right. So a 250, you're, you know, you're, you can't, you can't order just a small amount and they hit you harder for it. Having the bigger volume, they give you a better price.
What happens with the small, you lose your volume, that pressure.
Yep.
Is what it is. It's the way it works. It won't expand fast enough when it gets down.
Yeah, but on that part, I would say make a couple calls.
Yeah, I'll make a few calls, bring it out.
Okay, next is the second reading and motion to adopt the policy for blocking against motion. And I don't know if you want me to read this whole thing, but the language in the last sentence or the last bullet was changed as we suggested, and it says, lower all hydraulic components to the ground or secure blocking and check to ensure that they will not drop before starting repairs or maintenance.
I make a motion, we adopt that as written.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we need a motion to approve Newport sand and gravel fleet permit.
I'll make the motion, we approve it.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of issuing a fleet permit to Newport sand and gravel, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, is there any old business?
I'll tell you, I got to that plant for your 46th plant.
It's, it's your personal property now.
Is there any new business? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
There we go. And the time?
8:12.
8:12. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.